The microphone on?
Not yet. Yes.
Okay. Would you, Pastor, lead us in an invocation?
Let us pray. Father, we ask your blessings to be on our meeting this morning. We ask you, God, that you would give us wisdom and guidance, Lord, as we deal with the agenda that's before us. Be with our city officials today, our law enforcement officers, our fire department. Protect them, God, and be with our city council and those that are involved with the affairs of our city today. Just lay your hand upon them, Lord, as together we labor to see this city continue to grow and be the beautiful town that we enjoy, all of us here today, in your name. Amen.
Let the ladies just put the flag of the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Bobbin Serpy.
Here.
Barbara Cragg. Russwin.
Here.
Chairman Carlander.
Here.
Richard Donnelly.
Here.
Roger Brunswick.
Here.
James Orstner.
Here.
Okay, so we need to approve the minutes from the last meeting, which was basically an adjournment.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Bobbin Serpy.
Yes.
Barbara Cragg. Russwin.
Yes.
Larry Carlander.
Yes.
Richard Donnelly.
Yes.
Roger Brunswick.
Yes.
James Orstner.
Is there any public comment before we get to the case at hand? So, Mr. Dolmer, would you tell us, this is on for a continuance?
Yes, sir.
And I would like you, if you would, take a moment and explain to the members why this is being continued.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, just so you're aware, we have David Theriak on the phone, if he is needed for any questions.
Oh, great, thank you. Good morning, David.
I cannot hear what's being said, I'm sorry.
I said, "Good morning, David." This is Larry Carlander. Can you hear now?
Better, yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir. What we have is a particular assemblage of property downtown known as the Terry Street Assemblage that has been pursuing both a comprehensive plan amendment and subsequent rezoning to planned development to implement a mixed-use and residential development south of Terry and on both sides of Old 41, north of the river. That application for the comp plan amendment has already been transmitted to the state and was back for adoption, hearing with the city council. When Mr. Theriak was down in our office and we were reviewing applications, and this particular zoning application came up, and we began to discuss how the comp plan amendment was going to work with how the zoning was requested. It was then realized that certain text that we had included in the land development code to implement certain mixed-use planned developments in a density conversion from commercial to residential for previous cases, had never had a subsequent comp plan amendment to implement those policies. At the time, it was felt by the previous council that it was not needed. However, our land use council said he was a little concerned, if we were looking to implement this policy now, whether he would be able to defend it in the way that he wanted to. And as a result, because he was not comfortable, we decided to ask the council to continue the case so that way, language to implement that particular policy, to implement a density conversion or a commercial conversion to residential, could be included in that comp plan amendment. Without that implementing language or without the ability to implement that language, the zoning application is not going to be consistent with the proposed comp plan amendment. So having the hearing today really wouldn't make a lot of sense because even if you were to recommend approval, you could not state it was consistent with a comprehensive plan or even the currently proposed comprehensive plan because that situation does not exist.
So, would I be correct in trying to, if I were to simplify what you just said? The comprehensive plan has language in it that deals with density in the Old 41 overlay.
Correct.
And that density is 15 units per acre with a five-unit-per-acre bonus. The application is for 80 units, over three, a little over three acres. And that's the inconsistency. Do I understand that correctly?
Generally, yes, sir. There are, the ability to use that 15 and 20 units over the entire site is going to be the question because there are different, there are different maximum densities over different sub-districts. And for them to use the maximum density, the 15 or 20, across the entire site for what they are generating or what they are converting from commercial to residential is necessary for them to implement the plan. This, so really, what we're looking at is a situation where the zoning plan has not changed. There's been no amendments or requests to what they've been asking for for this application. But how it's implemented and how we look for consistency with the comp plan is what's in question right now.
So, it's that, it's inconsistent with that provision I cited?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then I'm confused. Help me to understand how we go forward. I think we have an obligation to the applicant to make this, you know, expedited if we can. Aren't we in a position now, because of what's transpired, where they went to Tallahassee asking for an amendment to the comp plan that did not include an amendment to the density part of the comp plan?
Correct.
Are they now required to go back to Tallahassee?
We will be having a first and second reading in front of the city council as well as a new hearing in front of the local planning agency. If it is adopted at that point, at the second city council meeting, we will send it to Tallahassee and explain to them that we have adopted what went to them with changes and explain those changes and where they came from.
So it does have to go back to Tallahassee?
It will go back, but it would have gone back anyway. When it's adopted, it's sent back.
Could you lay out for the zoning board, please, how we move forward with this case? Tell us what the next steps are, all the way through, when it comes back to us, so that everybody is on the same page.
The next hearings will be set up for the comprehensive plan. Will be the first and second hearings in June in front of the city council for the comprehensive plan.
But you're asking them, again, I go back to, that amendment that they're asking for does not include the density?
Yes, sir, but those hearings that I'm talking about in June will have language that address that.
Okay.
So they're...
I got it, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I probably should have explained that.
No, no, that's good.
They're going to go back in front of the city council because they are adding additional language.
So in June, they go to city council?
Yes, sir. Also in June, they will be going in front of the local planning agency.
Local planning agency. Okay. LPA, right. What happens after that?
We will then be looking to bring this zoning case before you, assuming this amendment is adopted in July.
Hold on a second.
Yes, sir.
You've jumped. Doesn't it have to go back to city council for their approval first?
They will have a first reading at the first hearing in June, and they will have their essentially adoption hearing the second hearing in June.
That's before Tallahassee approves it?
Yes, sir. Once they vote, if they adopt it, it will then be sent to Tallahassee as an adoption, just like it would if they had adopted it last month.
No, but the first hearing was to vote on whether they should send it to Tallahassee, not whether they approve the amendment.
What we're going to do is we're going to start the hearing process for the comprehensive plan again.
Wait, may I?
Please, please.
Thank you. So, the comprehensive plan process, probably, I don't know exactly when, but over a year ago, they submitted the application. We started the statutory process of the comprehensive plan process, going through the system. We were getting ready for the second reading when we discovered there was some provisions in the comprehensive plan amendment that did not effectuate exactly everything that they intended. The way the ordinance was drafted, the title block did not allow an expansion. We felt that there was risk if we tried to adopt the ordinance by adding this language in, and it wasn't in the title block of the ordinance. So our desire is to re-advertise the ordinance with the new title block that would incorporate the intended language because what's intended is to allow the density to be blended in this plan, and you've read that in the staff report and everything else. So there's specific language we have in the land development code that city council had previously adopted. We desire to have similar language incorporated into the comprehensive plan amendment because it effectuates the blending.
But changing the block title doesn't change the comprehensive plan that says you're only allowed 15 units plus five?
So, so the...
That doesn't change?
Well, what is changing...
By changing the block title?
Okay, so the objective is to allow the blending. We have code provisions that talk about how to deal with some of this density downtown. We are incorporating that into, because it's a more conservative approach and because the comprehensive plan provides the maximum density, so you don't want to have bonus density programs that aren't internal to the comprehensive plan. It can go into the ordinance because it's specifically already what has been reviewed by Tallahassee, what has been reviewed by other state and local planning agencies, not just our local planning agency, but the regional planning council. The ordinance, once the ordinance is corrected, we can adopt because it effectuates what the changes to the comprehensive plan were intended.
Does it change the density requirements of the comprehensive plan? Yes or no? I mean, please.
It adds the bonus density that was intended for this blending into that section.
So, it will give them, it will say that it's no longer 15 plus five? It will say something else?
The applicant is...
Mr. Theriak, maybe that's a Theriak question?
In, just, I want him to answer, but they will be providing us language that addresses the density concerns, and we will be including a title block change so that those density, the text changes, can be included into the amendment.
Okay, thank you. That answers. So that happens in June. It goes to the local planning.
Yes, sir.
And we don't have a meeting in July that's...
That's been tradition. Now, you could have a meeting in July if you desire, but...
No, no, we specifically, we specifically, we had a meeting, we specific, all seven people. I wanted it August, the others disagreed with me. I wanted August, they said July. Six against one, they won, of all.
And your next available would be August 14th for the zoning board hearing. And September 5th would be your first reading, of city council's first reading, and then September 17th would be the second reading.
I have a problem on August 14th. I want to, I can tell you, I've got a medical thing I've got to attend to. Can we, if it's going to be in August, would you help me out on that?
Do we move it up a week?
No, it's got to go back the other way.
The alternative, and the applicant is requesting if we could consider June 19th. Now, because of the July 4th hearings, city council hearing dates would be moved to August 1 and August 15, which would be by the time...
I don't think we should do it ahead of council. I don't think we should presume...
By June 19th, you'd have one city council first reading, and you'd also have...
They don't vote at a first reading.
Huh?
They don't vote on anything at a first reading?
It's a land use ordinance, so it would be a public hearing.
But they're not voting, excuse me. I think it's the height of arrogance for us to assume what city council is going to do. I think we have to respect that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is the LPA hearing after the second reading?
No, it has to be before the second reading.
So it's in between the first and the second reading?
Or before the first reading.
Or before the first.
In this particular case, it's between the two readings.
We try to do it before the first reading because council doesn't like it too close.
I'll do everything I can to be helpful to the applicant, but I don't think we should presume that city council is going to do anything.
Then if it's not June 19th, it would be August 14th,
Okay.
and then September 5th and September 17th.
The two weeks difference between August 14th and September 5th, we have a scheduled meeting on September 5th.
And August 14th, I think we have another case that's going to be an extensive case.
So, no, we shouldn't do this one then.
Well, Mr. Theriak will be here for August 14th.
Is the applicant okay with September 5th? I mean, we're not...
August 14th, and then September 5th would be first reading, sorry?
September 5th for zoning board?
Zoning, right, here's the...
I'm sorry, I don't know who you are.
For the record, Alexis Crespo, Vice President of Planning with Waldrop Engineering. We would just respectfully request to come before you as soon as possible. We've gone through transmittal. What we're clarifying through the title block change and through this is going to be virtually a one-sentence policy addition to clarify in the comprehensive plan what the city has been doing for many years. They've implemented on another project downtown, which is to allow for commercial intensity to be converted to density units. Our 80 dwelling unit count has never changed throughout this two-and-a-half-year review process.
Well, you originally were 92.
We, thank you, we reduced it actually after our first submit. But 80 units has been what's reviewed by the state, what's been reviewed by council, your local planning agency. We're appreciative that this policy issue has been caught so that we can make sure this is very clean and easy to implement moving forward, but nothing substantive has changed. And our applicant, I hope he's listening, is very frustrated and wants to proceed because he has investors who wants to invest money in downtown, and he's very excited about this project. And he cannot move forward on construction plans. He cannot get investment backing to move forward on construction plans until zoning and comp plan is considered. And so if there's anything I can do to impress upon you...
With respect, with all due respect,
Thank you, yeah.
It seems to me pretty clear that the comprehensive plan overrides the land development code. And it seems pretty clear that the density requirement in the comprehensive plan says 15 plus 5. Am I not correct?
And 15 plus 5 is what you will see. We've done, we've met with staff, we've done calculations with the blending. We're not exceeding the 15 plus 5. It's just a, it's a language...
Thank you.
...addition to clarify how we get there and the mechanics of it because it is, we've been talking for 18 minutes. This is complicated for people even adept at land use matters.
Right. I felt it was very important that everybody here understand what the issues are. I mean, these are significant issues.
If we appear before you in June, you will have had, this will be, I believe, a third council hearing on this matter, and you will have your local planning agency decision.
They haven't voted.
They will not have made the final adoption hearing.
They have not voted. I just, I think that's wrong. I think it's presumptuous of us. We're there to advise them. This is not a change to some ordinance. This is a change to the comprehensive plan, the land use constitution.
Sir.
It's a big deal, and I think we ought to hear from them. With all due respect, I...
Thank you.
Just to point out on the record, I provided the zoning board with a copy of the scheduling sheet, so you have the dates.
Thank you very much.
I will tell you, August 14th docket, I believe, will be scheduling. Would you mind? I don't know if that day, or if we may be running into a few days. Something later in June.
Can we...
Like a special meeting in June. We could. I leave town on the 19th. We do need to continue this to a time and date certain, so I do need you to look at your calendars.
What are you contemplating? I'm sort of lost as to what the options are.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What are the options we're considering so that I consult my calendar?
So, normally, the dates that are under the zoning board Tuesday are preferred dates. Anything else? I need to see if we have a room available, as well as staff available because staff also handles more meetings than just the zoning. I mean, we'd love to just do the zoning board, but there's other boards too. And I didn't bring the city calendar to see if, for room availability, but Charlene would make sure that we have...
So you could do June 26th? Does that get us far enough along?
I'd have to see if there's anything else. Give me one second.
I'm on vacation then, bud.
If I may, Jacqueline Gensen, for the record, the only item I want to bring to your attention is the Popeyes case that was continued, the rezoning and special exception. We continued them to a date certain of June 19th. So we would need to make sure that we still have that hearing so it preserves their advertising. So, but we can set a special meeting for this case, if that is the board's wish. Also, if you want to consider another date in July where there are no vacations, that could be an option as well, if you want to set a special meeting.
Great. It doesn't get us past this. I need you to be a little louder for the record.
Yeah, I didn't hear, I couldn't hear anything.
Put the microphone to your mouth and, sorry, I know. June 26th does not work out for Mr. Theriak or myself.
Okay. Tell me what we need to do to accomplish what the chair is asking for is to have us deal with it after the council is done, after the council's voted. So we're acting when we have the change to this comprehensive plan accomplished, at least here.
Now, it would not have the 30-day effective date, but June 21st, 22nd, and 25th, we can check the city calendar to see. Now, that's a Thursday, a Friday, and a Monday. If council's meeting on it on June 20th, we know that it would either have passed by June 20th, or it will not have passed by June 20th.
So, they will have voted on June 20th?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Why don't we see if we can come up with something after June 20th that would work for people?
You mentioned the 21st.
So, 21st, I just need to check the rest, right. 21st, 22nd, and 25th. Then the next week, I'm not available. And then we're getting into the July.
Mr. Chairman, anybody on the board have a problem with the 21st? Anyone on the board have a problem with the 21st or 22nd?
For the city calendar.
Can we look to those dates?
The 22nd might give you a chance to maybe get a little bit of the city council information to you. At least you'd have a day in between those two hearings. Otherwise, it would just, there wouldn't be enough time to get minutes ready. We'd be able to incorporate their discussion. That's right, you could watch it.
There's an option.
Watch the hearing. Otherwise, we would have to just try to verbally incorporate that discussion into our presentation.
Council meeting's on the 18th, correct?
20th.
20th.
20th. I'd like to ask John a question. John, with all due respect, are we an overload? Are we? Seriously?
Well, from a workload perspective, probably, but on a public hearing perspective, I think that we just have a couple of cases that because they were pushed back some, you have commitments going into the future that you normally don't have. If that wasn't the case, I think this would be a little bit easier of a discussion.
John, excuse me, this says council on the 18th.
The city council zoning?
For the city council zoning cases, they're typically heard on Mondays.
Okay.
Right, and comp plan is, I'm sorry, this is the zoning schedule.
Pardon my interruption.
You're correct.
If it was a zoning case, the comp plan is the 20th. This is confusing.
Just a bit.
So are we looking at the 22nd?
Audrey, I think...
Yes. 22nd, 21st, what?
June 22nd is the Friday, and the...
What we want to do in between so we can look at the readings, like you were saying?
Right.
The room is open, so...
To take that time, that extra day.
You won't have everything like you normally would, but you'll have more than you would if it was the next day.
I'm good with the 27th.
What do you mean, we're not going to have everything?
Well, normally, what you would have are minutes and everything included in the packet. What I'm saying is if you're going to go two days later, we'll have a better chance to get everything to you so at least you have something to review as part of the hearing.
Day between, if you want to...
Yes, sir, from the council meeting. It wouldn't be anything else. All of that would already be prepared and included, and you would already have it in your possession.
Another question.
We are forcing this, with all due respect. I mean, I'd like to accommodate. But we are presuming that everything goes smoothly. For example, they're going to Tallahassee in June. Do we know that Tallahassee is going to return it in June?
There would be 30 days in which somebody could challenge a plan.
Right, that's my point.
I mean, that's the applicant's risk, not necessarily the city's.
No, but it's a risk that...
It's out there.
If Tallahassee doesn't approve it, we're pushing this. And we're going to wind up in exactly the same position we are today, where we've crowded everything in. I would suggest to you that it's in everyone's interest to have this so that everything is done and we're not faced with this ridiculous situation.
May I offer, though, that we're not changing our density-intensity? Again, a policy provision is being added, and we have been reviewed by Department of Economic Opportunity, FDOT. We've gone through all the state agency review. They've had no comments on this application. And what they are going to be seeing is one additional sentence that speaks to the mechanics of how this is achieved. There's no change to the 80 units and 26,000 square feet of commercial that they've already completely vetted.
Could I say one other thing? And that is, and it's in Ms. Gensen's memo that's attached to your agenda. And the statute she cites, 163, 3184, is the statutory process for adoption of comprehensive plan amendments. And one of the very, right. And, well, again, I'm stating it for the record.
No, that's good.
I realize you are, sir. Subsection 12 of that says concurrent zoning. And if you take a look at the words there, it says, "At the request of an applicant, the local government shall consider an application for zoning changes that would be required to properly enact any proposed plan amendment transmitted pursuant to this. Zoning changes approved by the local government are contingent upon the comprehensive plan or plan amendment transmitted becoming effective."
I would respectfully submit that that is not applicable in this case. Two reasons. One, they are resubmitting. And while you say it's a minor change, it's a change. So we would not be considering what has already, but more importantly, they have to amend their submittal in a serious way because there's a density change here. And that's a serious issue. So, to say, to assume, that statute presumes that everything is the same. But we have two changes here. And therefore, I think it's not applicable.
And I would respectfully disagree in the sense that we have a provision in the code. There probably is what, there's a legal term called latches, which means the government has always previously applied this. We have requested the applicant to make such change in an abundance of caution, and I think it's the correct thing to do, to make this change. But at the same time, I don't necessarily believe it is to, you know, the code should penalize, or the city deciding to make this change late in the game should constitute a penalty to the applicant going forward. Now, with that being said...
Wait, wait, wait. Does the, you're blaming the city for this? Does the applicant have a legal right to rely on the city's opinion?
The applicant...
The answer is no. They are required to understand what the law is.
Absolutely.
The applicant is required to understand that. The provision in the statute, in the comprehensive plan is very clear. Very clear.
Yes, sir, but...
It says in Old 41, 15 plus 5. End of story.
And what I would...
We're going to have to change that. And therefore, that section 163 that you're citing is not applicable.
If I was talking about taking a zoning case and saying, "Let's do the zoning case," but we have no certainty of what city council is going to do, I would agree wholeheartedly with your premise here.
Okay.
Where I disagree with you respectfully is the premise where city council has already made its decision, and at that point, the zoning would still be contingent upon the effective date of it, which would be the 30 days. But you could apply the contingency and allow to go forward, making the assumption there won't be a challenge during the... But you could apply the contingency and allow to go forward, making the assumption there won't be a challenge during the 30 days. Now, during that 30 days, it's the applicant who will be sweating, not the city, on whether or not somebody's going to make that challenge based on that 30 days. But I'm stating as a courtesy, and only as a courtesy, it's not an obligation on the part of the city. The city could look at dates in June following city council's second reading, at which point you have the verbal, all the rendering, you don't have the ordinance, you'll have a physical ordinance already signed and sealed. But you will not pursuant to our charter have the 30 days, as well as the state statute, because it's a comprehensive plan. It also requires the 30-day effective date.
My position is we're forcing it, and we're going to be in the same position we are today. And I will.
August 14th would be your next hearing.
I will respect what my fellow board members, I think we should do it in August.
Could we ask Mr. Therac for his opinions, since he's on the phone?
Sure. David, did you hear that?
No.
Ms. Craig asked, or zoning board member Craig, asked for your thoughts and opinions as to how to process this and proceed.
You broke up at the end there, Audrey, again, I'm sorry.
How, whether or not we should be looking at a June hearing date or wait till August. And then the August, remember, we have some other things that may be on the docket that may force August to be more than one day.
David, you, my, my point was that if we do it in June, we are presuming that everything is going to get done within 24 hours or 48 hours of when we're scheduling the zoning. These people graciously volunteered, and, and they keep coming in. This is not the first time. This is the second time in a row where we're faced with this situation. And to be on the safe side, to, to make sure everything is done, we wait till August.
That's certainly within your discretion. That's a policy call for y'all to decide on scheduling. I don't think there's a legal issue there.
If there's any disagreement, we'll.
Could you speak to the legal part of the issue, please, Mr. Therac?
Was that a question? I cannot hear, I'm sorry.
Yes, I want to know if there is a legal issue or not. That's what I'm asking. I mean, if we, if we hold the hearing in June, following the act, the second hearing by the board, and assuming, we certainly would cancel the meeting if the board voted against it, but let's assume, for the sake of this question, that the board approves what it seems quite willing to do, would we have any problem of holding a hearing after that, in June? What would the legal issue be?
Audrey, could you restate, because I'm getting about every other word. I don't know if there's a problem with the mic or with the phone use.
I've got my phone right, mic right there.
I guess the best way to summarize Professor Craig's comments is that she's looking at the legal aspects, the risks associated with if we proceed forward prior to the full 30 days of knowing that the provisions will not be challenged.
And when you say the provision, you mean the comp plan amendment?
Yes, sir.
And that's frequently what takes place under the statutory provision that allows for concurrent processing of a comp plan amendment and a rezoning. The rezoning is contingent upon the comp plan amendment becoming effective. So if the comp plan amendment doesn't become effective for some reason, the DEO objects, or somebody files a lawsuit and objects and prevails, then the rezoning does not become final and effective. It remains in limbo until the comp plan amendment becomes final and effective. But that's a common occurrence when folks do both a plan amendment and a rezoning application concurrently.
I would ask the, the board, let's, we've, we've had enough discussion. What's the wishes of the board?
I, personally. Personally, I'd say August. I think just, June is just too, and we're assuming, you know. No, let's not assume. Let's be on the safe side.
I don't have any trouble with June. I think that, under the circumstances of this case and what Mr. Therac has said, if this is a procedure, as long as we wait, I would have trouble acting before the second hearing of the council, which was the original proposal, but I don't have any trouble in June, and I don't have any trouble in August either, whichever you want.
Same, June or August?
That's the question. Which do you, which do you think is more prudent, June or August?
Well, would it be for the, would it be better for the applicant if we did do it in June? I mean, you know.
Okay, so you're, you're June, August?
Not June.
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 June it is.
So June, we're limited to June 21, 22, and 25.
Well, I think you, I think you suggested that 21 was not a good idea, because it was too fast.
That was, that was Mr. Dolmarche.
I'm going to, yeah. So, I don't care, 22 or 25 either is fine with me.
22 would be better for me, because on the 25th I'll be gone. And we just have a plan, so.
25th will be better for, I think, for the board, given development, community development, giving them time. Giving them two days, why wait two days? Do it on the 25th, they give them the whole weekend to do, get everything, all their ducks in a row. That's my personal feeling.
May I weigh in on that for a moment?
Please.
Yep.
From an availability perspective, any of those dates work, but I'm already going to be down there for oral argument for the city in Tampa on the 26th, so I can easily be down there on the 25th for the zoning board meeting and then go handle oral argument on behalf of the city in a pending appeal on the 26th in Tampa. So from a travel perspective, the 25th works better for me.
I vote for the 25th.
The 25th it is?
I second that. Make it the 25th.
I, so if we continue this hearing.
I'm out of town. I'm at my grandson's. I forgot. No, that's May. Excuse me. This is June we want. I apologize. Let me just see here. No, it looks good.
I'll be out of town on June 25th.
Still have a quorum.
Yeah, still got a quorum.
So, Mr. Curlender, you'll be out of town?
No, I'm here.
You're here, so. So Pastor Winn is the only one without the, the scheduling conflict. Are you okay if we?
Yeah, absolutely.
So.
I'll pass the manual, the invocation to the gentleman at the end.
If I could have the zoning board agree to continue case, I'm going to read the case name into the record. Terry Street Assemblage Mixed Use Plan Development, PD 1631991, BOS, to continue it to June 25, starting at 9:00 a.m. If I can have a motion?
I'll make a motion as you read it.
Thank you.
Second. There's a second. Roll call?
Discussion.
Discussion.
I, I have some, some discussion to make here. Could I get a little bit more background on, on this application? I mean, there, there, this is in the old US 41 redevelopment overlay district that brings with it certain requirements, procedures, goals, aspirations, et cetera. Calls for design review meetings and that type of thing. I guess my question is, why are we asked, why are they asking for what they're asking? I mean, is, why is it 80 units? Why is it 29,000 square feet? Has there been a plan that's been reviewed by staff? How did you get to these numbers?
Again, for the record, Alexis Crespo with Waltrip Engineering.
I have to turn around.
Apologize. A little under the weather, thank you. Yes, we have a master concept plan that we'll be presenting to the zoning board. We've architecturally designed the buildings. We have PK Studios, who've done a lot of great redevelopment work throughout southwest Florida that have worked with us to design the site based upon the available acreage, the different site amenities that we built in to arrive at that density and square footage for retail office, commercial uses, as well as density. The, the comp plan is needed because you're downtown for the parcels under ownership by the applicant, and many other parcels in the downtown redevelopment area don't allow for mixed-use buildings. So the whole purpose of our amendment, that we, we fully hope will be approved by the time we come back to you, is to allow for true mixed-use buildings in your downtown, where people can have office space on the ground floor, have a cafe, and, and live above. And we think it'll really make for a great catalyst project in your downtown.
Have you had any review meetings with those architectural plans, with anybody on the staff?
They have reviewed, Sam Vincent, your city architect, has reviewed both as the city architect, preliminary renderings. He's also seen this application as a local planning agency chairman. We've met with the Downtown Alliance on a number of occasions. The applicant is actually the vice chair of the Downtown Alliance, so they've been up to speed. We're, we're visiting them again at the end of May to give them an update on the project. So he's, he's spent a lot of time with consultants to make sure this is what can be built on the property.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call? We're voting on.
On the motion.
On the motion, which is hold the meeting on June 25th.
Bob and Serpy?
Yes.
Barbara Cry?
Yes.
Russ Winn?
Yes.
Chairman Curlender?
No.
Richard Donnelly?
Yes.
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
Jim Zoros there?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. On behalf of the applicant, this is significant in terms of his timeline. Thank you.
You're welcome. So this, the, this part of the meeting for this application is now concluded? Is there anything else that anybody wants to, while we're here, to talk with the community development about?
And Mr. Chairman, if I may just make a comment. The last two meetings ended up, this one and the one before, ended up in continuances. It appears to me that there's been a bunch of time spent by the zoning board. I missed the last meeting because I was, got the implication, it was not necessary to be here because it was postponed. So I didn't come to the meeting, understanding that procedurally I probably should have, because nothing was happening. But John, I'd like to ask if there was, like this meeting, for example, two weeks ago, we knew this was going to be a problem. Why are we here? Why couldn't this have been done administratively? This is a huge problem that we just worked through. I understand that, and maybe that's the answer. But let's look at the meeting before. If we, if we're not going to do anything, why are the seven of us gathered here? To say, to say it's been postponed? It's a little infuriating for me.
I understand, sir, and believe me, it's not anything we are looking to do to bring you all together to simply discuss a continuance. However, once the hearings are advertised, and, and we've noticed the public that we will be here, it is now our obligation to be here, even if it's only to continue to a later date. Unfortunately, it's a procedural.
Can't you advertise a cancellation if it, in advance also? If it's seven days in advance, I'm pulling that out of the air, that you know it's going to be canceled, couldn't you advertise a no meeting?
It would be difficult, only because it's not just the seven days that comes into question. It's the amount of time the newspapers require it before the notice is actually run in the paper. There is a period there that, yes, we could, and, and I believe the procedure allows you to do that. However, once you get past that date that the newspaper needs the advertisements for them to run it, you're really looking at about two weeks, maybe two and a half weeks, somewhere in that neighborhood. But yes, sir, I do not enjoy bringing everybody together to only discuss continuances.
And the reason I'm being a little bit, I just want to, I know there are special meeting rules for zoning, if there's something, because a long time ago, prior to this government and another, there was a cancellation where a council member said, "Oh, it's okay. You don't have to show." And the, the city, it was that county commission, the county commission actually took the action anyway, even though all the people objecting something didn't show, so nobody in the room knew that happened. The person thought it was going to be canceled or continued because of unavailability. And because of that, we try to be very strict in making sure that if there is a member of the public who has the ability, you know, we don't want people to rely, "Oh, it's okay. You don't need to show," and then have a decision made, because, for example, we could have told the applicant, "Oh, this will be continued to June whatever date." And after that discussion, I would not feel sure about continuing anything ever to a time and date certain without having everything authorized. So, I mean, yes, it would have, it'd been better if we had 50 people in the room yelling at us, you know, "How dare you continue?" But, because, I mean, that does happen, but you want to make sure that everybody's rights are protected.
Can I?
Yes, please.
Did you have a question? I can wait. I want to ask a question on a different topic. When we had our meeting for the workshop, it ended up saying that, that we would be getting together and going over these, the comp plan and our zoning regulations, and zoning regulations particularly. And I want to know whether the status of that is. Have we scheduled such a meeting?
You and Mr. Worster have both sent me dates that you are available, and I have sent those off. And as soon as they get the rooms ready, I guess they will call you and let you know what dates, the rooms available and which dates we are going to have this scheduled.
I don't think I've sent that. I don't believe I've sent that to you, but I certainly.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you sent, I thought I did see one from you, so.
Not to my recollection, but it could be a senior moment, I suppose. At any rate, I will send you, what, what kind of month are you looking at, and what time are you looking at?
I think we had started looking at, not next week, but the following week, and there were some dates. I, I will send you the dates that we're looking at so far.
Okay, all right. I'm pretty much here and available for that, but I thought it would be good to make sure that that was underway.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And then I, just for clarity, June 19th meeting is council then for the zoning?
No.
No?
That right now.
We're still going to do that one?
Right now, that, that would be reserved for Popeyes. I do not know if Popeyes is going to proceed, or if they will withdraw.
Okay. So we're still doing that one, okay.
As of right now.
Okay.
But if, if they let us know, I will let us know, so we don't show up for, for no apparent reason.
Okay.
I have, I have a question, just relative to space. We basically have two rooms within this building to have meetings. It was a 101 and council chambers. Can these, can your meeting that you're talking about to review the comprehensive plan and go over that, can that be held off-site?
Yes, sir. As long as the location is, is noticed, we can do it.
Noted to who?
In, in the advertisement, yes, sir.
And again, some of that also is logistical, because even though legally it can be handled off-site, we need to make sure the clerk has the availability of all the things that they need in order to keep proper minutes, depending on the subject and, you know, the content. And there are some meeting requirements. We have to have it inside the city. It can't be in a location that's not ADA.
No, I'm thinking inside the city, of course.
Right, a location that's not ADA prohibitive, and a location that's not restrictive. For example, behind country club gates, you can't say, "We'll have special meetings," and then we won't allow members of the public on the other side.
Does it have to be able to be televised? So you have to have that equipment?
Zoning hearings, under our administrative code, are supposed to be televised. If you're having a meeting and it's not really a zoning hearing, I think there can be, this is no different than workshops. Lots of them are not televised.
Question. Why would the public be invited to workshop?
Public's invited to everything in business for transparency. Florida Constitution requires it.
I understand that you'd agree. But wouldn't it make, wouldn't it make more sense to have the meeting, go through the finer points, come up with one solid plan, and then propose that to the membership, to the public?
So there's abundant case law that, when you start, even at the smallest level, you need to have those meetings transparent, you need to have deliberations. So you're not just seeing a final decision, you're seeing the deliberations. So even, you know, for example, I have a committee right now, email chains, you know, please, you know, they can't, you know. It looks harmless, but a lot of times it's, it's still formation of information that becomes, either they want to conduit, or they want something going on. And there's serious consequences for these violations.
And it's this, wouldn't it be just as beneficial just to have it televised without having, per se, in here?
Not, not everybody has the opportunity to see it when it's televised, however.
Right.
It's only Comcast that allows that.
Well, you can webstream it, and that's, for example, if you don't have Comcast.
You have to have it.
And you can go to the library and get. And you can go to the library and get, you know, go through and do that, or you could attend our meetings in public, and, you know, you try to do everything so that does not frustrate public participation.
And in reality, it's mostly like what happened in our workshop, the public doesn't come, so I don't think it's huge.
Why would we want it outside this room?
Well, that's always, well, that's always a, availability issue.
Availability, right, okay.
And I have a, I have a, the ability to maybe get the board of realtors a room, if you need it spaced.
Okay. So, anybody, has everybody been heard on everything that they wanna be heard on? Is there a motion to adjourn? Okay. Roll call.
Bob and Serpy?
Yes.
Barbara Crag?
Yes.
Russ Winn?
Yes.
Chairman Curlender?
Yes.
Richard Donnelly?
Yeah.
Roger Brunswick?
Yes.
James Worster?
Yes.
John?
Excellent. We're adjourned.
Civil, civil emergency.